All right, we're live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and today we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Killwine. Hey, guys.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We also have Julie and Colin here from our team, the amazing heroes that are in your inbox when you're reaching out to our support. What's up, guys?
Heroes, oh.
Hi. We are delighted to have you all here today. Looking forward to a very informational packed session. We're talking about events today. These are events that you can have online or in person, and in all cases, you can manage them with your Get Oiling system. So as you're coming in, let us know where you're coming in from. We're always excited to see where that is in the world. Let us know in the chat. We are a global, globally compliant system to help you run your young living business. So you could literally be anywhere. Oh, yeah, go ahead and share the temperature since it's January, six below in Minnesota for Sheila. It is not quite that cold here, but I bet our North Dakotans have something to say about the cold.
Yeah, totally. Oh, I was waiting. Jess isn't on today, but she she topped things with minus 29 in western North Dakota. It was a balmy, relatively balmy minus 24 here this morning. Some surprise Minnesota or Minnesotan over there actually had something warmer, but that's southern Minnesota. I see Egan. That's probably right.
I can't, I can't, you guys. Well, Finland also minus one. So you know, we appear in the northern part of this continent have have some sameness over there. All right, I'm looking forward to some warmth. I hope you all have access to a sauna or something. I can't live without those. All right. So back to topic today, you guys were talking about events. Maybe just a quick show of hands or let me know in the chat. Do you use events to share your own living? This can be online, offline, in person. All of that counts as an answer to the question here. It could be vendor events. I see in all the time in the answers here. Maybe you do have familiarity with doing events. Maybe you've kind of wondered how you can. Maybe you've done a lot of in-person events and would really kind of like to get some leverage in, maybe start doing things online. So we're going to cover all of those bases here today, give you some ideas to start moving forward with. We'll have some Q and A and we do have two live website reviews scheduled. So let's get the show on the road with some slides team. We can turn our videos off for better recording quality and then we will get this thing started. All right, you can see my slides, right?
Sure, Kim.
Perfect. Thanks. All right. So today we're talking about using live events to grow your young living brand partner business. So what we're doing today is first going over training, how to use events to build your business. We'll do some website reviews as well. As mentioned, we've got two of those scheduled. And then, of course, we are here for Q and A and support. So if you are here today, even if your questions have nothing to do with events and you need some help, that is what these live sessions are for. So please go ahead and put whatever questions you have into the Q and A's so that we can be helping you on the live call here. We may even be able to share screens and dig into whatever you might be dealing with in terms of challenges today. So go ahead and add those to the Q and A. The chat is not as useful a place to put your questions because we do get lost in these very busy weekly work sessions. All right. So if you are watching this as a replay in the future, hello, you can join us on one of these amazing live calls every week at New Year's Eastern. If you go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession, you can sign up there. It's free to anyone with a young living brand partner business or someone who's considering getting started growing with Young Living. You don't have to be a Get Oiling member to benefit from the training that we provide on these calls. All right. And if you want one-on-one help on a call, like the two folks who have reserved time today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview and secure your space on an upcoming call for us to work together. It does not necessarily have to be that you've created a website and we're reviewing it together. We just ask that you are a Get Oiling community member when you sign up for this. If you're wanting to talk to someone one-on-one about potentially signing up for Get Oiling, please reach out to support@getoiling.com and we can connect you with one of our amazing team members who can walk you through what it looks like. All right. So let's talk about using live events to grow your young living brand partner business. So at first question, do you use live classes, trade shows or other events to share your own living? What does yours look like? When you have events or when you have done events in the past, I know the last couple of years might have taken you out of your normal routine with events. So what does that look like for you? When you have events, you see trade shows. Does anybody still do classes, oily classes? Maybe in-person teaching? Yes, live classes, trade shows, excellent classes, make and takes. Wonderful. Oily classes on Zoom and in person. Fabulous. So thank you for sharing that in the chat. Let me ask you this next. How do you let people know that this event is even happening, right? If you're going to be at a trade show, how do you let people know that you're going to be there currently? Or if you're going to have a class somewhere or you're going to hold the class on Zoom or wherever, how are you letting people know how to find you? So we already have some gold stars here using Get Oiling to email and text, right? Facebook or event or stories Bailey, yes. Pace, a Facebook business page, Facebook events, then some Facebook email, WhatsApp, Facebook profile. Excellent. A lot of folks are using Get Oiling to email about this. Great. We're going to talk about that today. So let me ask you next question. How do you, you personally let me know in the chat, how do you log who has attended your events or who you've met at your trade shows or other live events? How are you keeping up with who you meet, who was there so that you know who to follow up with and how? What does that look like for you? Paper forms. Spreadsheets. Using the event section and Get Oiling, I see Julie. I used to keep a log on paper. Okay. Put their contacts into Get Oiling. Excellent. So call, text, message, email, take their details on my mobile, add them to my contacts when I get home and then tag them. Invite people through the event. Excellent. Okay. So lots of different ways of doing this. And then finally, another question. How do you track your follow-ups? So after these people have gone to your event, how are you following up with them so that they might be able to become your next young living customer? Sheila has a set monthly call plan on Get Oiling. Excellent. Miscellaneous post-it notes scattered on my desk. I feel seen 10 years ago, Kimberly. That was me, girl. I wish I had a good oiling back then. To-dos and get oiling, follow-up, send a campaign, calls and text reminders. What's up Buffalo? Invite to a free event tagged. Okay, excellent. So a lot of you guys are using the system for this actively. So let's go over the event basics with Get Oiling. So the things that you can use Get Oiling for to create your events. We're going to go through a couple of different options that should really run the gamut of all the different types of events you might hold. And of course, if you have questions about specific types of events, maybe you're holding or you want to hold and you want to learn how to use Get Oiling for them. After we've gone through these slides, feel free to ask questions in the Q and A so that we can maybe even walk through the system together and talk about how something like that might strategically work for you. Because in some cases, it's, you know, you're going to need something that's a little different from everyone else. All right. So what we can do with Get Oiling for our events is first, we can promote and share the event details, right? So we have a place that you would use, just like you would use Facebook events or like you would use Eventbrite or other event software and programs. You can use us that way. You can also share just like you can from those platforms using Get Oiling, except it's on your website in this case. You can also collect attendee contact information. This is where things differ from, say, Facebook, for instance, where you don't necessarily get the email address and the phone number from your people who are reserving, right? So if somebody RSVPs to something on Facebook, you don't have a way to connect with them outside of Facebook, right? So you can also do your post-event follow-up with your leads. This is something that can be highly automated and streamlined. And then the other thing that's really cool, I don't know if you guys knew about this, you can plan your events with Get Oiling. You can give yourself a to-do list leading up to your event, online or off, that you can use each time you want to hold an event like that in the future. How many of you guys knew that? Did you know? Super cool thing. All right. So let's talk about how we can promote and share event details with Get Oiling. There's two main ways you can do this. Number one is our Events Manager. This is excellent for events that you want to have listed publicly or on your website. So there are a couple of exceptions that I would leave off of your Events Manager. So let's just say, for instance, you are really wanting to show up, talking about your oily passions, but not necessarily flying the flag of Young Living everywhere. You want to keep people a little curious so that they're more open when you finally get to share Young Living, right? That's our goal. So if we're doing that, then we don't want to have an event on our website that is talking about convention, sharing details about Young Living Convention or about a brand partner call, right? Or something that is internal Young Living stuff. That's the kind of thing that I would recommend that you keep unless you're just using your Good Oiling website for your Young Living and period. That's it. You're serving your Young Living customers with the website. If that's your strategy, then by all means, use it. But if you are wanting to use Get Oiling to get and manage leads using these events, definitely recommend that you keep your Young Living specific stuff, the in-the-know Young Living stuff off of the Events Manager because it is something that's public on your site. Now, the other thing that you can do, and this is how you could do those other ones, that we don't want public are landing pages. Or you can use pages on our site with lead forms, right? So this is where we can actually get their name, their email, maybe their phone number or other information prior to that call. So they're actually registered for the live call that you're hosting or the class that you're having and so on. I've historically recommended the Events Manager for things that are live or in person and have basically said you can go 50/50 on landing pages versus Events Manager. If you're doing a digital event, something that you're hosting on Zoom, for instance, but there's not a hard and fast rule for this. I would go with the preference that you personally have. I do think that landing pages are a little bit more ideal for online workshops and classes than the Events Manager. And either of these, you guys can be shared if you create an event with a landing page or the Events Manager. Either of these can be shared digitally, display event details, date and time, trigger automations and take payments, right? So if you do a make and take and you charge five bucks for the materials or what have you, you can set either of these instances up to collect money. If you need to do that, but then if you wanted to trigger an automation, like applying a follow-up plan for yourself to send an email out to somebody at a certain date and time, all of that kind of stuff is possible with either of these options. I think that the primary rule here is if you want something to be publicly visible for anyone who visits your website so that they can register for this specific call, use the Events Manager. All right. So I want to show you, and this is actually an example of something that Jackie, one of our Gold Star users uses. She's a platinum with Young Living and she creates events that her team is able to leverage. And she actually like bundles these into resource bundles so that her team who's using Good Oiling can be using these things just like she is, right? So where you see nervous system reset, Jackie doesn't just have this on her site under events. Her team does too. But that's a whole other call, a really cool strategy. But anyway, you can see upcoming events as they're published on Jackie's homepage. In the back office, in her dashboard, you can also see where she's managing the events that are coming up. And then we've got this cultivating and abundance mindset over here on the far right where she can manage that actual event. I will say this, Jackie's using kind of an interesting like double strategy here. Where if you click the Learn More button from the Events page, it actually takes the person, the visitor, to a landing page, right? So this is, she's doing this specifically because she's sharing this event in and doing this in a duplicable way with her team. If this was just Jackie's call, then you would want to actually have people register in the Events Manager. It's pretty cool. Anyway, the other thing that you can do here is use landing pages. So like I mentioned, Jackie also uses these landing pages. So just in this is under landing pages, under contacts in your system, you can create a landing page like you see here. Or you can use a custom page or a page with lead forms. So that's this one over here on the right where I'm advertising a webinar. Or in this case, we were broadcasting live inside of the Grow Group on Facebook, a Team YL group, right? So you can create a page where you can talk about what's going to happen at the event and then have a pop-up that shares how to how to register, or you could just have this on a landing page. Pretty, pretty pleased you guys, if you do have questions, make sure that those are getting into the Q and A's so that I'm able to find all of them when we stop for questions. All right. So let's talk real quick about collecting your attendee contact information. This really is more or less the same two actions, how you get the name, email, phone number, the RSVP for the person who's going to attend. Get Oiling Events Manager or Landing Pages allows you to do this. There is one primary difference. When people register on a landing page, they're not saying, yes, I'll attend or no, I won't. You can actually get the yes, no, maybe options in the Get Oiling Events Manager. So this is really the most straightforward way to just collect information, their name, email and phone for your events. Either of these two are great. Now, if you wanted to use a page with lead forms that opens up other interesting possibilities. So let's just say, for instance, you wanted to grab just a little bit more information about the people that you're collecting information from. And guys, this is for you, especially if you are, if you're doing trade shows and you want to like have people sign up for information on a page, excuse me, that you have displayed on a, on a computer or a tablet or something at your table. You can have them say, you know, what their primary interest is or something like that. You can actually get more information from your people, right? So you can actually customize what you want to get from them if you're using a page with a lead form. All right. So let's talk about post-event follow-up with your leads from these events. Obviously, I think this is, you know, aside from just putting together the information so that you can promote it and let people know you're going to have this event or be at an event. The most critical piece of all of this is how you follow up, right? Because you're doing the event to get leads, right? You're going through all of this trouble to get a table or secure a space or put together a presentation or whatever so that you can get new customers. So whether and how you follow up with those people is, it's basically 80% of the importance of all of this, right? So there's a few ways that you can do this. You can use campaigns. Campaigns are a really good way for you to just send a quick confirmation to people who register to say, hey, you're signed up for this. If you're using our Events Manager, that is an automated email that can go out just to say, hey, you're registered for this event. You can also set this up from a landing page that says, hey, you're confirmed. A great example, you guys, if you go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession, that is, that's an event. You're signing up for our series of weekly calls. And you'll see that you go to a confirmation page after you register and then you get an email that says, here are the dates and times that we meet and here is the link and here's what you can expect. So that is actually the same thing, like you can follow what we do where that's concerned, say, if you hold weekly calls. All right. So campaigns are also a great way for you to send those follow-up emails after the event so that you can engage people or send a replay. Again, you'll notice that the people who signed up for the Weekly Work Session, which is you, if you're here today, we've got a tag that's called Weekly Work Session. And so after this call is over and we put our replay link together online, we then go and filter for those contacts who signed up on that landing page for this event. And we send those people a link to the replay, right? So that's one way you can follow up. Another great thing you can do is simply send out an email that says, hey, I'm so glad you came to that event today. I'm looking forward to learning more about you. Hit reply and let me know a time that works for you to talk this week, right? And now you can just make sure that anybody who's paying attention can say, oh, that's me. I want to talk to you, right? So you've got campaigns that can do that for you. You can also have follow-up plans that remind you to reach out to these people one-on-one, to add notes, find them on social, that kind of thing. And follow-up plans, if you don't see an option to add a follow-up plan, you know, either to your event manager or to a landing page or page that you're creating, use automations inside of Get Oiling to add a follow-up plan to people who opt in to that event or on that page. And let's talk about the bonus here real quick. This is event planning. This is actually an incredibly simple thing that you can do. You're just making yourself a list of things you need to do from, from before the event up until the event. So you can give yourself a to-do list ahead of time with follow-up plans. This is a feature inside of our system. And you use negative values on your dates for actions that you need to perform before the event. So if you're familiar with creating campaigns with us, day zero is the day of, it's immediate, it's right away. But then day one is a day later, day two, two days later and so on, right? Now with follow-up plans, you can have negative values. So you can say, you know, 10 days before this event, I need to make sure I've got my printed materials five days before I need to make sure that I've posted on social or sent an email, that kind of thing, right? So this is a really cool thing you can do. All right. So I know I've just gone over a lot of different features and options for you and I'm really happy to take your specific questions about, well, here's the type of event, you know, like what can I use? What would be the best method? We could definitely do that here, but if you want to learn more, because there is a lot to learn here about these different features and how to put them to use, you can click the little green button, this little green guy right here that you see on the screen. When you click it, you'll see this little need help with a little waving emoji. And then you can search for whatever it is that you want to learn more about. So all these keywords we've talked about here today, campaigns, follow-up plans, Events Manager, pages, landing pages, saved replies, all of that kind of stuff, you can find articles on them right here inside of Get Oiling. And also, real quick, if you go over to our YouTube channel, that's youtube.com/getoiling, look at the playlists because we also have specific playlists now where you can go for, go and find the specific things that you're looking for. So we do have blogging and events, for example, right now as one of our playlists where you can see previous trainings that we've done about events. We've talked about running a live event with Zoom, a presentation that you then turn into a replay webinar. We've talked about trade shows and vendor events and live shows. So there are playlists. Definitely check those out as well. All right. So let's get into some live reviews and Q and A. I know we've got quite a few questions here. And I want to make sure that those are covered and we're going to get into. And then we're going to get into some live reviews as well. I'm very excited to do that with you today. So let's look at some Q and As. Okay, so Ilka, you say you do a lot of classes, but you don't feel techie. That's okay. Your Zoom option to put the Zoom videos. Okay, here we go. There's the rest of the question. Is there another way to save them so I can send them to my people later besides putting them on YouTube? So I recommend if you want something to be publicly available for consumption, that you do put it onto your YouTube channel. You can make it unlisted on YouTube if you don't want it to be easily found, but it can be shared. If you want something to truly be private and only available to people who register to review information, if you want it to be behind a landing page or even a paywall, that's where I recommend using a paid service like Vimeo or Wistia. We use Vimeo. I find it easy to use. It is, I think it's a little bit cheaper than Wistia and it plugs into our vaults really beautifully. All right. Cornelius says, I scheduled a live call and see that there are a couple of steps that need to be done to schedule, invite, follow up, et cetera. Do we have any event to-do list plans that I can assign to myself to get all of the steps done in the right order and automate it? So actually, I would very much recommend that you check out the Events playlist on our YouTube channel because there is, there actually are several of those where I've included a literal checklist of here's this and here's that and here's all the things you need to do. I don't recall specifically if we have resource bundles at that point, so I don't know if I've shared a follow-up plan. But we've definitely given some, some full examples of how that can be done. So I definitely recommend that playlist to dive into that. Mary says, do team members need to pay for that to see those events? No, no. So if you're talking about Jackie's site, Mary, those are public and available on Jackie's website for anyone to attend. They're obviously calls that are going to be, you know, easing into sharing Young Living and they are created for her team to use and share. On her team, if you're a part of her team, she does take the custom or the landing page, the event, I think a campaign and a Canva template or something like that. And she puts those into a resource bundle that she gives to her brand partners on her team who are also using Get Oiling so that they can import those things onto their website. That's a little bit advanced and maybe we can have her do a training or something for us on that at some point in the future, but that's not a paid thing. That's a thing she shares. All right, Amanda, is there a way to charge for a class? Yes. Would you use the Learn More button and send them to a landing page? So you can actually, when you're in your Events Manager and you're setting your event up, you can require a payment and that will actually show up, I think, on the page, the same page where you're RSVPing. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, that, that uses like an older PayPal integration. If you want like it all integrated into one spot. I mean, this is a little bit more advanced, but you could create a custom page that has a payment on it. And then whenever they purchase, you could have it run an automation that would then RSVP them for that event. And then you make the event, I think there's a way of making it by link only, sort of like hiding it on your list. So in other words, they would only see this custom page as the event. So, but a lot of people don't even set up the event. They just set up a custom page with payment and then tag people and then that's kind of their event. So, but yeah, you totally can.
And that's, I think as well, I think another, another thing to note here, which is still a little bit advanced, a little bit technical. Another reason you might want to put events onto pages as opposed to in your events is because you have the ability on your custom pages to restrict view of other things, right? So if you don't want your header or your footer, the menu of your website or anything to show up on the page, if you want to just give somebody a, an option to sign up for this thing right now, which is often a really good practice, because if you give people multiple options, sometimes they don't take any. And we don't want people falling off rabbit holes and we could be getting that lead. So in some cases, especially maybe if you're doing like a webinar style event or something like that, it is a good idea to use a page for that. All right. For lead forms, let's say for a vendor show, if you're doing a drawing form, is there a way to pick a random name from that lead page? If not, that would be a cool feature, download CSV, upload it to a name picker. Yeah. So that's, I mean, I don't know of another way we could do that. Right? You, you'd need to export that and then add it to something random, a randomizer to pick it. I think Greg, use random.org when we do our drawings, right?
Yep, yep. It's pretty bare bones, but it works really well.
Yeah, it's free.
Right.
All right. Julie says, is there a step-by-step for setting up an event with pre, during and post-event? Yes, absolutely. We have on our YouTube channel. It's actually a two-part series where we talk about taking your events online, taking your classes online and then turning those recordings from those classes into a replay sort of webinar style thing that you can use as a lead magnet on your website. And you're going to find those in our playlist of events. What is it? Blog, blogging and events, I think is the name of the playlist.
Yeah, we actually made a help article. I'll put it in chat here. That compiles all three of them onto a single page. So you don't have to go looking for them on YouTube. So that link I just put in chat there. And if you're in the Help Center and you're watching this replay later, search for how to promote and host online events for YL. And then there'll be a page with three videos on it.
Perfect. Sheila, so events can be on YouTube, like you can broadcast live on YouTube. That's not really something that fits in with the strategy we're talking about here, but it's certainly something that's technically doable. I would recommend that you have your events, unless you are really committed to becoming a YouTube creator and focusing on creating a whole lot of stuff on YouTube, that you actually have your events on Zoom. So you can use just our system to execute this entire strategy if you're doing a live call. Because you're, you know, you're setting everything up in our system, you're presenting from Zoom also in our system. You do this from a Zoom call. And then you, once, if you do want to turn it into a replay, you do need to put the video somewhere so that people can see it. And that's where you would be kind of choosing, I'm going to use YouTube or I'm going to use something else. But, but no, the event itself, in this case, what we're talking about is not on YouTube. All right. Ilka, when in trade shows, is there an app to set up and use Square for Payments when they want to shop? So I mean, we have, we have Stripe integrated on our site, depending on what it is that you want to sell. So if you want to sell registration to an upcoming event, you can have a page that maybe lists those things. They can click on them. They can go off and purchase that kind of thing. It really depends on what it is that you want to sell if you're not just, you know, connecting Young Living with people at the trade show. We don't have inventory management. So if you, if you have like small things, maybe oily stuff, inhalers, things that you've created that you are selling, that's not, that's not something that I would necessarily recommend using us for just because we're really more made for like digital delivery of products. Or in some cases, I mean, we do have a couple of rare instances, right? Like we have a girl that sells like art boxes and has a subscription box that uses our other platform, Attractwell. But more often than not, it's going to be easier to understand and simpler to execute if it's just something digital. But you could use definitely like, you know, Vimeo or Cash App or Vimeo, sorry, Venmo. Lose a few vowels there. So Venmo or Cash App is something that you could use there as well. And of course, you know, cash, cash is good, right? Okay. So to clarify, Kimberly says, do you recommend YouTube for video storage or Vimeo? Just started recording and saving my classes. If you want leads to see it, then feel free to put it on YouTube. If it is a class that anyone could see and, and you're not, you know, like it's, it's something that you're comfortable with anybody being able to see, then put it on YouTube. Even if you make it unlisted on YouTube, anybody could share that link. So, you know, it could get in the hands of other people. So I would put it this way, if it's something that you would sell or that truly you are positioning something as being of such great value that they must become your lead in order to see it. So like a webinar type presentation, I would never, ever put that unlisted on YouTube because it, it removes the sort of integrity and the positioning that I'm giving this information. If it is something that you want to live in a private vault, or especially if it's something that you want to charge. If it is something that you want to live in a private vault, or especially if it's something that you want to charge for, Vimeo is where you want to have it. So, so yeah, so let's just say, for instance, you're doing essential oils classes. In theory, you kind of want anybody to see this, right? So in that case, put it on YouTube, make it unlisted if you're only offering it behind a, you know, a, a little, like an opt-in wall. And have that on YouTube and that's totally fine, embed that on your site, what have you. You do run the risk however, especially if you're using Young Living as a keyword at all. You do run the risk of YouTube recommending videos that might point them in directions you wouldn't, you'd prefer for them to not go, right? Because you get on YouTube, you start looking up Young Living stuff. There's this thing called negative SEO where people will rank content or, you know, make their content show up on the first page of search using very negative words like scam and things like that. And they're doing it to sell other products and not because they actually think that there's anything wrong with Young Living. And it's just not a good thing for a lead to see, if that makes sense. So I, I recommend Vimeo if you're going to be talking about Young Living or if Young Living is going to live in the title especially. Okay, you've got an answer. All right, I can't figure out how to put my email on my website footer as a link. When I click on support@goodoiling.com at the bottom of your website, it opens up a new email draft. Yeah, so Jamie, all you have to do is actually make it a link. So select that text and then click the little link button in the editor. That's going to pop up the field, just like you would link text to go somewhere else. And what you put in the URL field is mail to, M A I L T O, no spaces, and then a colon, and then your email address. And that's actually going to hyperlink, so when somebody clicks it, it's going to pop up whatever their email provider is and they'll be able to email you. But another option, just so you know, I don't know if you know this, you could say, get in touch, hyperlink that with hashtag contact and it'll just pop up your lead form, your contact form. So now you're not just, like they're not just emailing you, reaching out to you. They're also like becoming a lead in your system, they're adding themselves to your system. So I think that if I were to recommend anything, that would be what I would say to do because you can have campaigns that are attached there that says, hey, I'm so happy to hear from you. I'll be getting back to you soon. In the meantime here, check out some of these, these blog posts that I wrote or something like that. So Jamie, there's really only two hashtags that you would use in, inside of a pop-up or inside of a URL field on a custom page, and that is hashtag contact and hashtag lead. So if you're using a lead box that's going to pop up on a page, you're going to use hashtag lead and that'll pop the, the lead box up. But in any other cases, just hashtag contact and it pops up your contact, which by the way, also has your email address hyperlinked for you and your phone number that you have listed on your website. Okay, good questions today, you guys. All right, feel free to keep them coming in the chat. Let me pull up my calendar here real quick so I can grab our website reviews today. So Sheila, I know you're here, Nancy Todd, are you also here? Will you raise your hands for me, please, if you're here? And then we're going to come out and chat. Sheila, I've seen you, so I'm going to go ahead and bring you out. Hello?
Hi there.
Excited to have you here today. Tell me what you are wanting to talk about.
Yeah. Getting my husband over here as well. We've been trying to just revisit, revisit my, my site. And so if you do have it there. So you've got ourhealthyhomes.com?
I'm pulling it up right now. Okay. Yes, let's look at it. Okay?
Okay, so those, all those tabs now are my sway links to those classes.
Okay.
Okay, and you know, we, we had the generic picture and so when we send somebody to there, we just wanted to try to make it as easy as possible.
Okay.
So, you know, the click to learn below and then the, the contact me. I guess i- is that too simple or, or does it need to be more?
I would like I could definitely see a functional purpose for a page like this. I don't know that it's going to do you justice as the homepage of your site because it's not really giving anyone any information about who you are or why they would want to learn these things from you. However, if the way that you're using this webpage is, you know, you're having conversations about people or about these things with people, about oils or moving in the direction of oily conversations. And you say, actually, if you go over to this website and you scroll down and you look for whatever the title is, then you can actually get, you know, instant access to whatever the presentation is. So as a sort of directory of things that you would be personally like one-on-one saying, here's what I recommend that you check out. That's, that's really the, that's the instance that I would recommend here.
So after you've already engaged with them?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, because we're not, you know, there's, there's not much here that is, you know, specifically compelling to the average person unless they've got the context of a conversation with you. So if you've, if you've been in the DMs with them or you met them at church or whatever, and you say, I've actually got a website that has all kinds of great information on it. You know, here's, here's the one that I would recommend that you check out and just head over here and, and search for it. One thing that I would potentially recommend is maybe formatting this up just a little bit into categories of some kind so that it visually kind of flows a little better and feels a little easier to kind of navigate and, and work through. Because it is a lot, it's a lot of options that I think for, you know, unless they came there with a specific thing in mind and you have already been in contact, it might be a little overwhelming. I'll show you how I've actually broken this because these are Grow Workspace bundles, right? Yeah, I'll show you how this is broken up in, I, I don't know if I can get into the JNL account without changing my login. But think about it like this, we've got, you know, the Young Living basics, right? Which are, you know, the premium starter kits, basically like here's, here are all of the kit options. If you want to bundle, here's what seed to seal is, here's how YL is different, right? So all of those Grow Workspace bundles that talk about Young Living stuff, it's really signature Young Living. And then you've got, and this is one of the categories I like to create is like the YL must haves. And this is more category, so in this category, I would put Ningxia Red, I would put supplements, right? Because I know they, they have several supplements ones. The, the Thieves line would be another one. And then the CBD products as well, potentially, if that's something that you wanted to do. If you want to take payments on your site, I would shy away from using those three words or three, three letters together though. Because Stripe will scrape your website for mention of CBD and then look, accuse you of being a CBD retailer, which you are not. And they will prevent you from being able to take payments. So just, just so you guys know that. But yeah, like, so, so then from there you have, you know, wellness or family or special interests or seasonal. And then you can kind of break these things up into something that's a little bit more logically easy to navigate. Let me, I'm going to pop out of here real quick just for privacy sake and I'm going to open up the, the Jane account so that you guys can see what I'm talking about. Because I actually have this, these set up inside of a, inside of a member area in a vault as a class. And it is a template and I teach this template in the How to Move Your Groups Facebook. How to move your groups off of Facebook course that we've created. So here, I'll show you how it's under oily education here. I have this divided up into the Young Living basics, so I have my kit, Now What, Why Young Living 101, Select 30 Starter Kits, Three Months of Wellness and Essential Rewards, or in this case, Subscribe to Save, right? Or Loyalty Rewards. There's the must haves, we've got wellness. And because this is hidden away inside of a member area, you know, you don't have to worry about, Stripe's not going to be able to scrape content that's behind a paywall or inside of your private member area. So CBD can be mentioned in here safely. Oily Living, where we've got stuff like teachers, yogis, athletes, college, oils and crystals, that kind of thing. Oily Family would pertain to kids and babies and pregnancy and seedlings and animals, beauty and then seasonals, all of that amazing seasonal stuff that they do, like gardening and, you know, holiday things. So you could break the page up into, you know, sort of sections here where it can be easy to navigate. And I think that that might, that might make it just a little bit easier for people to get right to what they're
Can you go back, can you go back to that page that you just had?
Yeah.
So, so is it better to have, like you have them listed there or those, those big bold blue buttons? Is, is that too much?
So these are two different things, right? So you have, this is a page, so this is like a webpage. And where I am right now is actually inside of an online class inside of a vault. So this is a member, this is a member area, right? And then we're inside of this vault and then inside of this class.
Okay, so we're not at vaults yet, so.
So, so here's, here's something that you could do though, and, and here's an idea. Because something like this, I think is going to be a lot more effective, big picture to somebody who is a customer who needs to learn more about products so that they can see the value in ditch and switch and, and getting into loyalty rewards. So something like this, you could actually copy this page into a vault, once you start making vaults. And you've got all of this great information and you can actually kind of replicate the work that you've already done. So when you're, when you're ready to make a vault, you can actually have all of this inside of it as well.
And just edit it.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you wind up making here.
So then what do you suggest this first page to be?
Oh, so I mean, if, if it's going to be the homepage of your website, I would really be thinking about, you know, what people need to know about you guys. You know, what's your story? Like, when, when did you figure out that our homes needed to be healthy and that the things that we had before weren't? What's the story that they can relate to? That's certainly something you could also plug into one of our built-in themes on the Good Oiling site if you wanted to. But the homepage is really an important place for people to land and see that, oh, wow, I can relate to this person and they understand me. And, and they know things that I want to know more about. And then from there, and this is where, you know, if you're using a homepage that can help direct them toward maybe, you know, getting on a call with you or joining a free Facebook group or getting a free giveaway that you have or something like that. You know, that's, that's kind of what we would want if you're using your homepage as sort of a business card, right? In this case, you're kind of using your homepage as a tool in your more belly-to-belly kind of prospecting process where if you're meeting people out, you can easily say, go to ourhealthyhomes.com and scroll down. And I think that this particular class would be one that you would want to check out first, right? So there's, there is a use for this page. It really kind of depends on how you guys are sharing and how you want to run your business. Let me show you an example. We do have a full training and a template that you can use for a homepage. And that is, let me see.
Because we had that one with the girl and the mom, you know, but.
Oh, like one of our built-in themes?
Yeah.
Uh huh. Yeah, so I mean, that's certainly doable, but if you want to make it your own. I have a full training on this on our YouTube channel and I actually give you this page as a template with Canva templates to actually swap out the images if you want to. And so, you know, you've got an opportunity on a homepage to really speak straight to the person that you really want to be inviting into their first steps in their oily journey. Tell them a little bit more about why you guys could really help them and then offer them something. And simply this could be right here, let's get in touch. Let's hop on a call where we can talk about A, B, C, and D so that you, we can get you this outcome that you want. Click here and then just make this hashtag contact, so it just pops up and they reach out to you. And if you have any testimonials from your team, you can pop them in. You guys can share a story, have a picture of you here. If you're blogging, you can put that here. And if you have other things that you offer, you can put that on the page as well. So I would recommend if you want to use your, your homepage like, more like a business card, like a traditional homepage, that you follow something more like this or even use this template to modify to your own liking. Or, you know, like I mentioned, if you want to use your homepage as sort of a directory of information to supplement, you know, sort of your conversations when you're sharing, then I would just organize this just a little bit more to break it up into sections where there may be fewer of these buttons in a section. Maybe have the buttons be a different color, right? So if it's, you know, the oily basic stuff, maybe it's one color. If it's the next section, it's another color. Does that make sense?
Yep. Can the, can it be a video?
A main image.
On the, on the main image?
Up here? Oh, oh, are you talking about over here?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's a great thing to do. And, and you can actually see that on, I'll show you Colette's website, Colette's done that here. She's just got a quick little one-minute video and she has her like a call booking connected here. But yeah, you can put, you can put a, a video up in the top, absolutely. And I think it's a, it's a homepage step-by-step is the name of the training and it's on our YouTube channel. And like I said, it does have this whole thing already kind of made for you guys to swap out and, and make it look like how you'd like it.
Change background image and all that.
Change background image and all that?
All of it, yep. If it walks you through all of the steps.
Is there a right and a wrong way for the events page to look? So I have all my, I, I have all my, I think if you, where, where did you put my picture? Sorry about that dinging.
No worries. Oh, this is great. This is great. No, I love it. So you have, if, if I were to say anything about what
Okay, so then at the below, but at the very bottom. That is, we had that.
It was on the main.
It was on the main page.
Uh huh. This is something that's built into our, our built-in themes. So when you go to my story and about or my, my story and photo, this is going to show up and you can decide where it shows up. You can choose whether or not it shows up on these event pages. It can also show up on your blog and if you use any of our built-in themes, this will show up on those as well. But you do have the option to create something like this, which looks like this down here. A picture and then, you know, a little bit of an about, right? So I get into some detail about sort of the strategy here, but you can put that into a section on a custom page.
Okay, so then you were going to say something about the events, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. So there's nothing wrong with any of it. I think it's all interesting and compelling and you can actually share the individual pages for the events that you have, which is great. But for, for sort of brand consistency, I do recommend if you're going to use a featured image like you've done here and here, that you do that for all of them or don't.
Okay.
Right? Like, like just to kind of keep a consistent look, right? So if we look at like, because Jackie does this as well. And in her case, everything is branded. So, you know, she's got, you know, here's her nervous system reset, here's everything is energy. And so if you see more events, they're all going to be kind of using that same thing. And the other thing too importantly, that I would recommend if you're hosting events, and I think Colette does as well, have under events on her website. Yeah, so she's got them over here on the side, right? So yeah, I, I would recommend using a template just for, and this is an optimizing thing. I'm not saying you're wrong by any means, but if you want to improve upon what you're doing, then I would recommend using an image that you, sort of like an image template.
Hide and not in the text?
I'm sorry?
Just one image at the or the image in the text is okay?
Oh yeah, you could put an image in the text if you want to, for sure, for sure. You know, so just, just keeping a consistent formatting.
Okay.
And the same, the same goes for blog posts because they're showing up in a feed. And if we're kind of doing each of them a little bit different, it just kind of breaks up the visual flow. It's, it's a, it's a nitpick, it's not a big deal. But it looks good. You guys are doing some really interesting events. Triage for your schnoz. I love this. That's really good. I love it.
And then we do, we do monthly samples. Would that be something that would be beneficial on that quote-quote homepage? You know, something to, you know, to talk about?
Okay, so.
We're trying to change our Healthy Homes graphic there to something better. So do we do, do you guys help with any of that?
Um, yeah, absolutely. Reach out to our team. We, our team can help with that for sure. So just shoot a message to support@goodoiling.com. And depending on what you guys are looking for, we can set you up with a quote or, you know, a next exploratory call. But if you want to have people sign up for samples or request samples, you could do something similar to what I helped Colette do here on her homepage, which if I can get back there, is to put this right up here up top, right? Are you, are you looking for an essential oil sample, click here? And so this is just a small page section. And in her case, she's taking them over to this great Richard Bliss book video
Yeah.
where people can sign up to get an essential oils 101 class from Grow Workspace. So in this case, you would just have them. What's up?
That Richard books video that's embedded on there.
It is embedded on this page. Yeah. Yes, the video sheet, she got that from his coaching program.
Well, we have, I mean, anybody has access to that.
Yeah. So it's like, there are ways to embed videos into, into your page, just like she has one right here on her homepage.
Sure.
I mean, the Richard Bliss Brook thing is, is what's under your sync.com. It isn't.
I know what it is, but at the end of the video, it's you, you spin up on YouTube with 16 other options than to click off on.
Yeah. So there is, there is definitely a way from the, I believe they use, I think this is Wistia, looking at it. There, there is a way to get, you know, the video URL off of Wistia or get an embed code and to, and to plug that in on a page like, like that's been done here. It's not, it's, it's advanced. I'll say that. It's advanced.
That's him. That's my, he's my tech guy here.
Excellent. Yeah. So it's, it's just a matter of getting the embed code and, and popping it in. But yeah, that's, that's it. So I would, I would put a, you know, are you, are you looking for samples? Click here. And maybe have that be a thing up here up top. Maybe use a pop up form on the page so that you can collect not just their name, their email, their phone number, but also their address, right? You can put all of that onto this page here. So instead of having, well, contact me is bringing up contact. So in the case of Colette's page, instead of having this link off to another page, you could have the link here be hashtag lead. And then in the lead form on this page, this page, you could have, you know, enter your information below and you can ask, you know, name, email, phone, address, and, you know, and is there a specific oil you're interested in or something like that? And then you can go on from there.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay, I think that was good.
Good. I'm glad you guys were able to come out and I would love to see your progress as you continue with this and feel free to reach out. Our team is here to help.
Thanks.
Absolutely. All right. We do have a few more questions. I don't think, Nancy Todd, are you here? I think I searched to see if you were and I don't think that you are. So don't think you are. Okay. So we're just going to go through Q and A and be on our way, you guys. So Bailey says, what courses to get oiling have that I can go through to set up my website? I want to learn all the things. So to set up your actual homepage of your website, that website step by step tutorial on our YouTube channel, look under the playlist. It does have that template that I've just walked through and shown you guys. It's totally free. Download it into your account. I walk through ways that you might want to modify different sections of it to say and share different things. There's Canva templates that you can use, replace, make it your own. So that would be a great place to start. If your focus is on the website, if your focus is on working with your team and creating a hub to educate your people, then I would recommend that you go to How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook course. That's get oiling.com forward slash move your groups. And that will get you a full course that shows you how to set up a member serving vault and education vault inside of your good oiling system. And then of course, to get started for anyone, I think that the most important thing that we need to know how to use is the contact manager, right? So start emailing and texting from the contact manager, taking notes when you have calls with people, giving yourself a follow up because this is a people business and you have an engine that can run your people business in our contact manager inside of Get Oil Link. And we have loads of training on that as well on our YouTube channel, especially now that we have those playlists. You don't have to wonder what's what. It is all clear and right there. Let me see. Jamie says, I like this page as a resource vault for members to access to. Yeah, that's, that's where I would put it. However, it just depends, you know, I've never met two people that share Young Living the exact same way. And in some cases, it may just sent, may make sense to be able to say, hey, I just want to point them here and tell them to go find that. And in that case, that's a perfect page for that. If we kind of modify it just a little bit for visual flow, so it's not as overwhelming. Colette, as an, as an example, I showed her page. She is a networker. So she goes to networking meetings virtually during the pandemic, but has traditionally gone in person. And so she just says, go to my website and say you want to learn about essential oils. And so right there on her website in red, right at the top, are you here to learn about essential oils? So they can click and go off. She doesn't use it for a whole lot other than that, right? But that's exactly how she needs to use it because she wants to get those names, get those people onto the drip campaign, have them watch that video. So it fulfills that purpose, right? So it's not always going to be the same for everyone. How you use your business informs how you should set up your system. So don't, don't get into compareitis. I think we all know better than, than to compare. All right. Let's see. You can also separate each category and sections and create jump links. Jamie, look at the pro here. Yes. You can create jump to links and you can look those up in our help center. If you want to learn more about how to have people click something and then have it pop them down to a section of the page where it shows information. All right. Allison says, are there separate classes within one vault on holistic hideaway? Or is that page you showed a page within a class? So we were looking at her homepage that has buttons that go and open a new tab for all of those sway presentations. What I was showing in the holistic hideaway is inside the vault, there is a class called oily education. And in that class called oily education, there are lessons. Every one of those lessons is a grow workspace bundle. And inside of each of those lessons, the sway from that bundle is embedded as well as other stuff that's in there that's related. So in the Jane account, that was an online class. And then of course, we were looking at Sheila's page on her site. Okay, Kimberly, I'm not sure which training you're talking about, but if we're talking about the website one, it does, if you pull up our website training playlist, it is called Website Step by Step. And it's, it's one of the more recent ones. I think it's probably the most recent one at the time of filming right now that includes a template for you. And that template is going to be in the description of that YouTube video. So you can actually click it. It'll take you to get oiling. You can claim the bundle. It's got all of the step by step. It's got a Canva templates that are linked right there. So you click those and go make the changes and follow along and do all of that. Sheila, what's your question about two way texting? We can definitely address that here real quick. And Jamie says, do you have a video training series about automations and all the amazing ways you can use them? Yes, we did do a training on automations. And I believe, let me, let's just go over here real quick to our YouTube channel. Youtube.com forward slash get oiling. And let's, I'll show you guys what this looks like. So there is a search bar right here, by the way, if you're on a browser. This doesn't work as well on the phone. I don't think I've ever figured out how to do this on a phone. But if you type in automations, there's a bunch of stuff here that talks about automating your business. But in this case, you could also go over to playlists. And Greg, do you remember when you put the stuff into playlists where the automation training might have gone?
That's a good question. It kind of fits everywhere. So I don't offhand. There's a help article. I know if you search for automations. I know we did a training on it.
We definitely did. So I actually don't know for certain where that one is. But as mentioned, yeah, if we go over to here and we type in automations.
There's even a video from the bottom.
Yeah. Greg does go over a video in here. So the short answer, Jamie, for automations is that, gosh, just, just about anything. It's like, you can have an automation run to, let's just say, for instance, you want to give, you want to apply two campaigns to someone. So you're going to have an event. You want them to get a day zero email. That's like, all right, here's, you know, here's your credentials, you know, you log in, you get all this stuff, go to Zoom at this time, attend this call. But then you want to send a pretty sort of personalized feeling email, but you want to send it a few days later. Or maybe you want some, a completely different series of information that you want to share. You can actually apply two campaigns to a person. If you're using automations, you can apply a, you can apply a follow up plan using automation. So if somebody opts in on a landing page for something, you can apply a follow up plan. So you aren't just sending them automated emails. You're also getting to dos from Get Oil Link to reach out to that person. Or if you want to have on your to dos, and I think this would be a powerful one, is to look them up on social, find them on social media, right? Especially if you're just getting started. If it's a name you don't recognize, it's possible that this is somebody who is a friend of a friend. Maybe you have something in common, right? So that's the kind of thing that you can do, but there's so much more. I have one that I use where when clients get started working with me one on one, one of the things that they get to do is actually sit down with Jess, who's a designer who will help them create their logo, right? So in order for them to get to that point, we need to have specific pieces of information from them. We want to know the kind of things we want on the wall, on the website and all that sort of stuff. And so I have them go through an online class. And as soon as they have completed that online class, I have an automation that sends them an email that says, it's time to book your call with Jess. And so now they get that right away. They could book with Jess. So like, that's, that's one thing. It's a little, little bit more advanced. But there's, oh, there's so much. You can, here's another one we do on our attract well platform. And I think we do with this with good oiling, but I don't remember. When you sign up for office hours on attractwell.com, and for those of you who are coaches, do this, attractwell.com forward slash office hours. When you, when you sign, when you get the email, if you're already on our list, but you're not signed up for, for office hours, all they have to do is click a button and it takes them to a confirmation page because the automation sends them the campaign, tags them with the tag. You can use automations to untag people. Sky's the limit. I love automations, if you can't tell. Okay. So we've got that. And then how do I name a personal zoom link? I don't. Okay. So here's what you do. Create a custom page, create a page and get whaling, have a zoom link that you've already created, right? So save that zoom link. It's in your account. And it is, make sure it is the attendee link and not the one to launch the, the meeting. Okay. So take the attendee link for your zoom, go create a custom page, give it whatever name you want it to, but give it the end, you know, sort of in slug as, you know, your website was ourhealthyhomes.com forward slash zoom or something like that. If you want it to be your sort of perennial meeting room. And then here, let me just show you this real quick because this is going to get overwhelming to sort of explain. So we're going to take our zoom link. And let's, here we go. I'm going to grab, just going to pretend like this is the one, just call this your zoom meeting link for your own purposes. Copy link here. We go over to pages under my site. We're going to create a new page. Don't put anything on it. You don't do anything with this. This is just for settings. Under advanced, auto forward to URL. We're going to put that zoom link in right here. And we're going to call this zoom. And this doesn't really matter. And you just want this for your own reference. So this is going to be called zoom link shortcut. Right? And just call it both of those things. Nobody is ever going to see this page. Hit done, hit save. And now if we go to yourwebsite.com forward slash zoom, it's going to open up that link and it's going to have them sign in. So that is how you do that. That is how you name a personal zoom link. Never thought of doing that before, but that's totally a thing you can do with us. Amanda, how do you only have the five of you for your zooms? So we are, we're in a webinar. This is a webinar right now. So this is a little different from, from meetings. We do have a webinar add on. If you do want to do webinars like this, you get in touch with our team. There is a way to, to, to connect that together. But, but yeah, that's, that's how you kind of choose like who's presenting in this setting. Good question. Sheila says, my friends have done oilingmeeting.com, ourteamwebinar.com. You could do ourhealthyhomes.com, but if, I mean, it could be ourhealthyhomes.com, but you probably want that to be ourhealthyhomes.com forward slash something, right? Because otherwise, where is ourhealthyhomes.com going to go? You still want it to go to other places.
People will buy a second domain name for that purpose. If you want to, you know, spend the money on it, that's another option as well. But if you don't want to spend any more money, you can do it the way Ashley just showed you.
Okay. Can you give an example of why you would want webinar versus zoom? Hmm. In most cases, it's not a huge difference. It really depends on what it is that you're providing. If it's a coaching call, if it's group coaching, then having zoom, like what you have in your good oiling account is actually the most ideal because you can do breakout rooms and everybody can talk and you can kind of pass the, you know, pass the mic in that way. With webinars, this would be more for, well, if you're doing webinars, right? So if webinars are a strategy that you want to use to grow your business and you really only want one person to be able to, to be seen, or you want to control who's able to be seen and who's talking, then that's, that, that's what you would use webinars for. Majority of the time, unless you have a more advanced digital strategy or a funnel that, you know, has a, an actual webinar worked into it, it's not really something that's necessary. You can absolutely get great results with zoom as, as just the meeting platform that's included with your good oiling account. Excellent questions today, you guys. Thank you so much for being here. Love that we shared how to, how to customize a zoom link. That was pretty cool. All right. So I guess that's it. We're five over, but a great call today, you guys. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your questions. We'll be back next week. If you have questions that you want to see covered on an upcoming session, get in touch with us. Let us know. We're always looking for ways to serve you where you are. We're not trying to dictate what you learn. We want to give you what you're looking for. So reach out and let us know if you have any requests for topics to cover. If you don't see them on our YouTube channel, maybe we'll do another one on automations here soon, since we couldn't find that quickly and easily on our YouTube. All right. We will see you guys next week. We hope you have a great weekend and we'll see you soon. Take care, guys.